Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 27th, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order and ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Boddy. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Ms. Lilge.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Moore. Mr. Richardson. Dr. Rodriguez. Ms. Williams. Ms. Willis.
Present.
By the skin of our teeth, we have a core. So I do, Ms. Williams and Ms. Moore and Mr. Richardson all let me know that they were not going to be in attendance this evening, hoping that Dr. Boddy's able to join us. I do just want to point out for our colleagues and folks who may have a copy of our agenda that you may see something new this evening. We've added our mission statement, the district's mission statement to our board agendas as our North Star sort of guiding opportunity for us to see that at, in writing, in black and white at every meeting, to just remember what we are on task to do, which is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives. So just wanted to take that moment to sort of ground us in that and keep that in mind, in back of our mind in all the decisions that we make around this horseshoe. With that, I would see if there's any addition to, additions to the agenda for which I see none. That brings us to public comment on agenda items for which we have none. So that brings us to presentations. We don't have any present, oh hey, Mr. Shuldiner, you're up. Report from Superintendent.
Well, good evening, everyone. Certainly, I don't want to take too much time as I think many people are on summer break, a well-deserved break. But I just want to say to the community listening and to certainly the board members here and ET how thankful I have been over this summer. A lot of really great things have been happening. We have kids at summer school. We have kids at camp. We have kids at Ebersol. We have kids at Best Camp. You know, the sun never sets on, on the School District of Lansing. We always have so many wonderful programs. And certainly, if anybody is listening at home, you know, if you have students that want to participate in activities, please let us know. But also, very, very importantly, if anybody listening at home would like to work in the school district, work with the school district, we really want to make sure the community knows that this is the place for you. You know, during the summer, it gives me time to really meet with folks. And just today, I had a wonderful meeting with a great community member about being a mentor. And we're going to try to start that. We're going to try to start job shadowing and programs like that. So, you know, we're always open to partner with the great people of Lansing because our students deserve it, but they certainly also need it. So I don't want to belabor the point too much. We have a lot of stuff on the agenda to go. But just to know, you know, the summer's been very good. I know we haven't met in a while, but, you know, we're moving right along with hiring. We're moving right along with building. If you get a chance, you can see some of the great work and paint and basketball courts and all sorts of paving we're doing in parking lots. You know, so every summer, we try to do a lot of building and construction so that we can open up the school year even better. Currently, as we speak, the power is off in Lyons because we are bringing air conditioning, which is amazing. You know, all of our kids deserve it. We're trying to go building by building. But there's going to be air conditioning in April, air conditioning in Lyons by the end of the summer. And we're really, really thankful for that. There's new basketball courts at Riddle. There's new parking lot at Riddle. There's a lot of really wonderful things that are going on. So certainly, I urge any of you, take a walk, go see some of the work that we're doing in the schools. It's your tax dollars at work. It's very, very helpful. And we very much appreciate that support from the community. So with that, I just want to say thanks again and turn it back over to our president.
Thank you very much. We do have quite a few things to take action on this evening. So I'm going to take us right into our routine matters and old business. So first, we will have a facilities committee report. And I believe I'm turning it over to Dr. Kavanaugh this evening.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. So as the superintendent alluded to, we have a number of construction projects that are ongoing throughout the summer, all of which are proceeding as planned. Although the demo at Mount Hope was delayed, there was extra time built into the schedule. So the overall timeline has not been impacted there, which is great. The campus concept plan for Willow is, is moving apace. And that will be presented at a board meeting in the future. So we'll learn more about that then. The Lyons Audio Enhancement Pilot is set to begin this fall as well. That is later on our agenda. So perhaps we'll, we'll speak about it more then. But as a refresher, I know we've spoken about this before. This is a pilot program both for accessibility and to help with safety alerts so that teachers at Lyons will have audio equipment so that students, no matter where they're sitting, can hear really well. And also to help communication between classrooms in case of an emergency. There are, as you'll see in the packet, a lot of bids for upcoming projects that were considered. So we will, we'll be going through those. So that's, that's good news to see that things are moving. And then finally, we have a renewal proposal also in the packet for a program called FileWave, which basically allows us to control all of the devices at once for things like updates. So we're not manually hunting down every piece of technology that the district owns in order to do those updates. So that's what this program helps us do. We've used it for two years. And now it's time to decide if we would like to renew it. So you'll see that in your packet as well.
Great. Are there any questions for Dr. Kavanaugh or any members of the facility committee prior to voting on our large packet of bid recommendations this evening? Dr. Rodriguez.
Yeah. You can do the promise report.
Oh, okay, yeah. So no questions there. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez for a promise report.
I had two people telling me what to do.
Sorry.
Besides one at home. But thank you very, very much, Madam President. It was really a great meeting last Thursday, July 20th, of the Lansing Promise. And you know, in this meeting, there are two different groups. One is Lansing Sound Authority, who is the original group that created the Lansing, the name, Lansing Sound Authority, who is the one, this group, that receives the money directly from the state. The money that only can be used for scholarships. And this year was a very good amount. And we hope in a year also. And I hope to continue that. But that is not for sure. And the second group is Lansing Promise. Lansing Promise is a group that raised money for other activities. And let's go back to the Lansing Sound also. Now they can use money for readiness. And maybe use money also for reading. Then they are looking in that. They are saying that the budget, that was the first thing in the agenda, is look very good. And then the, Mr. Chris Holman and Courtney from Dean Transportation, they report about the golf tournament that they had the day before on Michigan State University. And I think they raised more than $55,000. And that, that is really money they go to all the students in our district and other places here in Lansing. After that, they present how much the Promise is doing in the schools. And presentation that they do every year, one or two presentations in the high school. And then a student named Nick, Nick Ocasada, they talked for about 20 minutes about how he was involved. And he is from, I think he is from Eastern, how he was involved with Promise thanks to somebody that connect with him. It's all about relationships that our students like always. That he is going to be, continue his education in Michigan State University. Now this year, every student will receive not only the scholarship for tuition, but also for other needs, other needs that they are going to be like books and other material that they need. It's going to be close to $10,000 that every student is going to receive. If you graduate from Lansing School District, if your son or your daughter graduated from Lansing School District this year in any program, then please communicate with Lansing Promise as soon as possible that you can be considered for a scholarship to go to any of these places. It's a good opportunity for everybody. Then he explained, they are going to do this kind of presentation more frequently in the schools. Finally, you have in front of you 20, 23 scholarship announcements that they are going to be responsible for carry on this, this kind of the scholarships that really belong to Lansing School District. But now, and I already talked with the superintendent, and he is going to tell us exactly better than me what all this means from Lansing School District after Promise. And that way Lansing Board Education knows from the beginning what are our responsibility and how we count they are responsible for the rest.
So thank you so much for that, Dr. Rodriguez. What you see in front of you is that the, the organization that is the Lansing Promise is now starting to coalesce all of the different pockets of money to help support our students. So there was something called the Hope Scholarship. And then there's LEAF, which is the Lansing Educational Advancement Foundation. There's been a lot of disparate, wonderful people who've all been trying to help our students. What's nice now is that the Promise is going to be kind of the overarching support. That way, it's easier to deal with the budget. It's easier to deal with the financing. It's easier to deal with the banks. They're really just organizing it so that we don't have to go through all these different groups. But the scholarships themselves remain the same. So if you see that, you know, something's a Sexton Scholarship or an Eastern Scholarship, the schools, of course, are still the ones that are going to be making the decisions. It's just now a lot easier that the Promise is kind of holding the purse strings and that they can distribute it the right way. There were some, you know, different scholarships that were in places that people might have forgotten about. Or there was boards that didn't know about it now. It's been a really wonderful thing. And I have to give a lot of credit to Justin Sheehan and his entire team to being such good stewards of, of their entity that everybody feels very comfortable letting them be the facilitator of it. But again, these scholarships that you see, these are still, of course, going through the schools. It's just that the, the bank, so to speak, or the holder of the money will be the, the Promise rather than LEAF or Hope or this or that. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The amount of this, all this scholarship is $1,700,000. There we are talking about few dollars. Then you also have in front of you Lansing Promise and Douglas Aveva Institute Partnership Proposal. The Lansing Promise is going to have partnerships with this trade company. And you have the description there better than why you can say it and what the proposal narrative is all about. But we also, also the Lansing Promise will pay for going to this school and receive a degree from these schools. Then that is another opportunity for a student that don't go to the university or Lansing Community College to go to receive a certificate or license for that kind of cosmetology, estology, barber, et cetera. Then that is another great opportunity for our students. And finally, there, end of the meeting, we discuss about 45 minutes for the strategic plan. But we had to table until the next meeting because strategic plan is not that simple to do as in one hour, half an hour. Thank you, Madam President. The report is coming to an end.
Thank you. I think it's really exciting that the Promise continues to add post-graduation opportunities. And Douglas J. is a, is a great trade school opportunity for kids to be able to participate in. Any questions, comments for Dr. Rodriguez? Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of the approval of our June 15th public hearing meeting minutes, the June 15th regular meeting minutes, and the July 1st board retreat meeting minutes. May I have a motion? Dr. Rodriguez?
I move, yeah, approve or approve of this consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Ms. Lilge. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Great. Motion passes 6-0. Next, we're into our action items. So we're going to start with our long list of bid approvals. There are 16 items under consideration this evening. Dr. Kavanaugh gave an overview of the items. They are going to provide infrastructure enhancements at Everett, Gardner, Lyons, and Sexton as were presented during our facilities committee report. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid recommendations as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments about the motion this evening? Ms. Lilge, absolutely.
Not to belabor it, I'm just curious. Sometimes when you look at the huge difference in the amount of the quotes that we get back, I just, I just don't understand that.
I'm really glad you asked because we have that conversation in the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, you'll notice that some of the bids are quite far apart. And so that was something we talked about in the meeting. One possible reason, and you know, Christine, if you'd like to speak to this more, you certainly can. But one possible reason that was brought to us was that because of labor shortages and material shortages, some companies will price that in. So they're basically saying, I mean, we'll do it for you, but it's going to cost this amount because it'll be, we'll have to be pulling people off of other jobs. We'll have to be pulling materials from elsewhere. And so it's only worth it to us if you're willing to pay this amount. So that's why sometimes some bids are quite a bit higher.
Ms. Lopez?
Just, just to mention that even though with all these expenses, we're still within budget, right? It's very within budget.
So currently, right now, yep, during the first, this is the first phase, the first bid pack. We're currently actually running $500,000 under proposed budget. I don't want you guys to get too, too excited about that because this second phase of this is Gardner. And if you guys remember the presentation we gave with the integrated systems, with the ceiling and the lighting and the ventilation and everything, that's, that's the much larger project that's involved. So, you know, that might get eaten up in the second part. But it is nice to know that the bids are coming in about half a million dollars under what we thought.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. I just went to hurry all this afternoon and they were working in the parking lot. And that was so beautiful and see it differently there was a few days ago. And the lines and the colors and everything. What I would like to have on the end or the beginning of September is a list of the buildings that we did things, no money account, only what we did. Sexton, we did that and that and that and that. And what else needed to do in the future. And that way, the board has an idea how the buildings are. And, and that way also we can go and visit. Then I think that will be good to, to know what we are voting for and to find out the results of that. Thank you.
I think it's been a while since we had one of those bonded motion tours. And I think it would be a great opportunity to have another one of those citywide tours where we invite in partners and tour the progress. Last time, we did that, Riddle was still under construction. So that tells you how long ago it was. We had to wear hard hats at Riddle. So it's been a little, yeah, well, yeah. It was under construction the first time. So, yeah, that's definitely a good recommendation, Dr. Rodriguez. Any other questions or comments about the motion on the table? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0. Nobody opposed? All right, next this evening, we have a consideration to renew the contract with SD, which is a technology bid. I don't see Mr. Vandeleen with this. Oh, but Ms. Tocar, do you want to tell us a little bit about what this is?
Sure. So FileWave is basically a system that allows us, as was explained earlier, to push out software systems, to make updates to software systems across all devices, both teacher devices, student devices, any employee device. So it allows us to manage everything from a centralized location. And it's, it's a really great product. I don't, yeah.
I heard that, but then forgot all at the same time. So, any, may I have a motion? Ms. Lilge.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the SD contract.
It's been moved by Ms. Lilge, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0. Next, we are on to item C, which is the voluntary resignation agreement and release for two of our LASA members. I will just point out, this is a, we are, what we have before us this evening is to accept a voluntary resignation agreement and release. Both individuals who are, are being released from their principal post are not actually leaving the district. They're just moving. So one staff member is going to remain as an urban fellow, move into an urban fellow position. And the other staff member is actually going to remain in a building for the first part of the year. And final retirement with the, retirement date with the district is not until June 30th, 2024. With that being said, may I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
I move that the Board of Education accept the voluntary resignation agreements and releases as presented.
It's moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Ms. Lilge. Are there any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Dr. Boddy? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Lilge? Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes. Motion passes 6-0. That brings us on to item D, which is, if you guys have noticed at our executive table, there's a new face there. She's new to the table, but not new to us. And so that position change means that we need to formally change our designated authorized signer for contracts. If you remember, we curate that authorization during our organizational meetings at the beginning of the year. And so with that personnel change, we need to designate another person. Is that right? We're designate, we're just designating another authorized signatory?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, for D?
Yeah, okay. I was, okay, I was just making sure I was, I saw you confering. So I wanted to make sure I was conferring with the right thing. Okay. So the, can someone, may I please have a motion for item D? Dr. Rodriguez?
I would, the Board of Education approve the changes in the designated signer for the contracts, Adam Kinnadas, and removing Joe L. [inaudible].
That is. It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Any questions or comments about that?
Madam President.
Sure, Dr. Rodriguez.
I think you should use this opportunity to thank Ms. Adams for all her work during so many years under so many different people. Now she's in charge. Then we cannot blame anybody else. But congratulations to her. Thank you, and good luck. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Yes, welcome and congratulations on that. Move to the table. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, this one I did listen to. Next, we have the audio enhancement requests for Lyons Elementary School. May I have a motion? Ms. Lilge.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation to pilot the audio enhancement program at Lyons Elementary.
It's been moved by Ms. Lilge, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. I will just point out for this one that we are using, just going to tell you guys the fund source, that this is a Capital Projects fund source. It's not coming out of, which is not general funds. It is general funds. It is a general fund purchase. Not bond funds. Perfect. Perfect. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please, oh, no, any other questions or comments? Motion on the floor. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great, I'm whipping through this because we have a closed session, so. That brings us to item F. May I have a motion? Ms. Lilge.
I move that the Board of Education convene into closed session for strategy negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
It's been moved by Ms. Lilge, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. Questions, comments? May I please have a roll call vote?
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes. All right, motion passes six zero, which means at 6:27, we are in closed session.
Yeah, right? We got billboards.
All right, it is, it is 7:30, we are back in open session. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is report from secretary and announcements. Dr. Rodriguez?
Madam President, then I am glad to report the Free Sport Physical Fair, August 1st, 2023, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Sexton High School. Please see website for more information. Free youth football to all enrolled third grade to sixth grade students this fall. Practice begins August 7, 23, at Washington Park. See website for more information. There are so many camps and groups of students and young people participating in this kind of the activities. There is good to go to the website and find out what Lansing School District is offering. Enroll up for 2023, 2024 school year continues. Enroll your students and others now. Transportation, passing, gas cards, CATA passes available. Fill out the application in the district website, and that way you will have transportation day one. Lansing School District is hiring. Can join our team and enjoy teaching or be with the students. Next board meetings are August 3 regular board meeting, August 10 information study session meeting, August 17 regular board meeting. I won't be present, but I will be reading and follow their board meetings during August. Thank you, Madam President. That is all for my part.
Thank you. I would add one friendly amendment to the announcements that we are not having an information study session meeting in August. So no August 10th, our meetings will just be regular on the 3rd and 17th. Wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Rodriguez. Next would be public comment on non-agenda items for which we have none, which brings us to comments from board members. Ms. Lilge.
I just wanted to share a little anecdote from my own family about the Student Development Center at the Don Johnson Field House. This is, my son has been taking part in it this summer and absolutely loves it. It's through wellness, and it's all about teaching kids how to make healthy choices for lifelong wellness, and there's, there's food, there's tutoring, there's a lot of mentorship, there's, they get to learn how to use the weight room, which for an 11-year-old boy is kind of a big deal. There's speed and agility training, and then there are other things. If you want to focus on some sports, you can do that. But it's not really just for athletes, it's for every student who wants to become healthy. It's free, there's food, and I'm so excited that it's an after-school option for my family, and I just want to get the word out about it because it's tremendous. The, it's for 6th through 12th grade, I believe, and so, you know, really special for, again, my son is 11, to have that kind of mentorship from the older students. They really have taken him under their wing, and they treat him with respect, and for him as a young man, to have older young men treating him that way is priceless. And I know it's the same for the girls and the non-binary students that are there, and I just can't say enough about it. It's a, it's a great program, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Glad to get that feedback. Any other comments, board members? May I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Dr. Body, supported by Dr. Rodriguez, that the Board of Education adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes six zero, and at 7:35, we are adjourned. Thank you.